Hi everyone, good evening. Welcome to the candidates who are sponsored by the League of Women Voters, voters of Muncie Delaware County, Greater Muncie Chamber of Commerce, the Bowen Center for Public Affairs, and WMUN Radio. We would like to thank our volunteers, many of them are out here. We'd like to thank Muncie Community Schools for allowing us to hold a forum here. And special welcome to the Boy Scouts that are here, my son is in the back. They're here to get married back and change for civic. So, just a quick, make sure, we'd ask that there are no recordings and please be sure to not wear any political attire of any kind. Again, the purpose of this evening is to just be a conversation with many candidates that we are raised to have for running for office this year. So, real quick, a format of the evening. Here in a few moments, I will introduce the candidates. The candidates, we will go, we'll start at the end and we'll move all the way through. And each one of them will give a two-minute opening statement. By the time I'm done with that, it might be time for closing statements. There are volunteers in the audience with the League that will have cards. If you have questions that you would like to answer, please hand them your card with the question and they will, they're gonna get that to me and I'll be able to try to ask those questions to the candidates for whoever is appropriate. So, if you need a card, please make sure to raise your hand now or whenever a runner will come to you and bring those cards. Questions we collect from the audience every 15 minutes. So, if you have a burning question, don't worry, we haven't missed you. They will come and get that. No questions will be accepted after 8:00 P.M. So, we can finish up again, try to get this finished by 8:30 P.M. Questions will be reviewed by the members of the League of Women Voters and a member of the Greater Muncie Chamber of Commerce before it's passed to me to be read. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question, rotating in response. And I hope the candidates will be gracious and patient with me as I try to remember whose turn it is to go first and make sure that it doesn't skip you. It is not intentional, it is bad memory as I get older. Anyway, so, and again, the right here in front, the ladies here in front will have a warning with 15 seconds left, so you can see that. And then after that, they will hold up a stop when your one minute is over and at that point, I will ask you to stop. And again, each candidate will have one minute for response and then also each candidate will have one minute for closing statements. I will make brief closing statements. And we ask that you hold your reactions during the forum and hold your applause except for now when we greet the candidates. So, welcome candidates. Thank you, good evening. So, I'm gonna do introductions. Each candidate has sent a brief biography which I'll read. It's in alphabetical order. And if you could, I will try to point to the individual candidates. We might actually have them in alphabetical order. But anyway, okay, okay, that worked out. Anyway, so, starting on the right, we have Audie Barber as a Democrat candidate running for, running on the City Council at large ticket. He is a lifelong Delaware County resident. He's a heavy equipment operator for Local Union 103. He has served his community as a 911 operator as well as a volunteer fireman. Audie is active in his community and has been interested in local politics for instance his life. He's attended every city council meeting in the past five years. He's ready to serve in this capacity. Audie wants to move, wants to move Muncie forward by making responsible and sensible decisions, decisions part made for the betterment of the community. Dale Basham is currently a candidate for Muncie City Council at large. Basham has spent his career in education as an English speech and drawing teacher, guidance counselor, associate principal of Muncie Southside High School, director of Muncie Area Career Center, and interim principal of Muncie Central High School. He recently served as interim executive director of the Muncie Delaware County Business Bureau, chairman of the Greater Muncie Chamber of Commerce Business Education Partnership, and past president of the Muncie Downtown Development Partnership. He served as the 104th Governor of Roadbury International District 6560 in Central Indiana. Basham was recently elected to serve as Central Indiana's legislator for Roadbury International Council on Legislation. Aaron Clark currently serves at Muncie City Council. He is a Muncie native and graduate of Muncie Central and Ball State University. Councilman Clark sits on the Muncie Redevelopment Commission revolving Loan Fund Finance Committee, Unsafe Building and Housing Commission, and he chairs the Tax Abatement Committee. Aaron and his wife Maria have five children. They enjoy family time, volunteer work, and outdoor activities. Amanda Dunnick, over here to my left, has been serving as judge since July of 2015. She was born and raised in Delaware County, graduating from Delta High School, earning her a BS degree from Ball State University and then her JP from the University of Dayton School as well. She began her legal career in 2003 focusing her practice on criminal law, family law, probate, and local government representation. As judge, she has implemented due process safeguards, updated the court's, court to electronic filing and case management, and shortening the time for cases to be heard. She is seeking her third term as Muncie City Court Judge. William Billy Matt Maccatage, over here, is a UAW member and started as sergeant-at-arms, became editor of the Union newspaper. He served as a union steward, elected vice president, as well as being elected trustee for CEP Community Action Program Council, and ended being president of Local, by being president of Local 207. He served as a precinct committee person of Precinct 12 for four years. He also served as a Muncie revolving loan fund board for 12 years. He is currently serving his fourth term on the Senator Township Advisory Board. The president of Board, he is currently also the president of Forward Visions, a non-for-profit community-based organization, and says right now, it is time. Holly Yip, here in the center, has a passion for people in place and she is a longtime hand raiser, working to make certain people in Muncie have the support and foundations they need to succeed. As Assistant Director of Community Mobilization for Heart of Indiana United Way, Holly is usually the first point of contact for those seeking help. Her volunteer experience includes being, being a former chair of the City of Muncie Historic Preservation Commission, a current board member, and runs the Old West End Neighborhood Economic Redevelopment Corporation, Corners and Centers for the Heart, and member of the Martin Luther King Training Team. Belinda Munson, to my left, currently, current city clerk, was raised in Randolph County. She attended Ball State University to study social work and eventually completed a master's degree in public service as well. She takes pride in the fact that the city clerk's office has been modernized and transparent. She made that campaign promise and achieved this by putting all documents online, easily accessible from your computer and smartphone. Belinda says, quote, "I'm not a politician, I'm a public servant. I'm here to serve, service the citizens of Muncie to the best of my ability." Norma Norman, also to my left over here, is a lifelong resident of Muncie. She graduated from Southside High School with honors and attended Ball State University and Ivy Tech College. She is married and has two grown sons. She has a lifetime of bookkeeping experience. Norma was chief deputy clerk for over 10 years, serving under two clerks. Before her position as chief deputy clerk, she was the office manager at Jackson Dewitt Tax Service. While raising her son, she was PTU president at Claypool Elementary and Grissom Elementary. She also served on the MCS Superintendent Parent Advisory Council. To my right, Rose Selby, immigrated from Lebanon. She graduated from Ball State University, began her teaching career with MCS in 1998. She's a math teacher at Southside Middle School where she continues to serve the youth and the underserved community. Self-received the Boys and Girls Club Legacy Award, given to a member of the community, has overcome a significant obstacle in their life and continues to give back to the community. Was a finalist for the Ball Brothers Foundation Excellence in Teaching Award. Rose Selby is currently a councilwoman and seeking one of the three at-large seats on council. Also to my right, Steve Smith, grew up in a white man community in Muncie, Indiana, is a graduate of Muncie Central High School, Ball State University, and the University of St. Francis. He is a member of Antioch Missionary Baptist Church and the pastor of Spiritual Missionary Baptist Church. He also serves as president of Marketplace Community Outbreak Church Center, president of the Nothing's Nothing Corporate. He worked in the labor production industry for 13 years and owned several businesses in the community. Steve felt that it was time for someone to step up and the community as a leader to help represent those in the community that do not always feel recognized or have a voice. He observes so much potential in the city. Steve enjoys spending time with his wife Whitney along with their six children. Again, let's have a quick, a lot of introductions, but a quick round of thank you. Starting from the right and then moving to my left and will end over here, I'm gonna let each candidate go ahead and take a, have a two-minute, yeah, say two-minute opening. And we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Barber.
Okay, I found that this mic will move the Ball State seat tonight. My name is Audie Barber, I'm running for City Council at large. I've got a passion for the way things are being run in the city. I get very passionate about it. I give 110% about it. Some people may think that's abrasive at times, but sometimes in politics, you have to be abrasive to get things done. So, don't get confused with passion and abrasiveness. Just know that I will fight for the taxpayers of the city and make sure that things are done the correct way. Not the way that they're being done now or in the past. There's rules and regulations that we have to follow and I believe we need to follow to a T. I live on the South Side of Muncie. I am running for City Council at large, which covers the whole city. I will be a candidate, I will be a city councilman that will bring city ordinances to the floor and not just bring one and forget about any others. I believe that that's the councilman's job, councilperson's job, is to bring the ordinances up that the constituents want to be brought in front of the board or in front of council. So, I will work diligently and hard and respect all of my constituents. And whether I agree with the ordinances or not, I will put them in front of the council and we will get a vote on them. So, that's my objective, is to make sure things run smoothly, correctly, legally, and take care of my constituents in the whole city of Muncie and not just the Democrats, the Republicans also. Because I can work across the party lines. I wanna work to make Muncie a better place for everybody and bring more industry back to Muncie and build Muncie back to where it used to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dale Basham and I'm running for City Council at large. I can tell you how proud I am to sit on this stage tonight. It was several years ago, I was principal here at Central. And at that time, our hydraulic lift was not working, so you could not use the stage as it had been designed to be used. And I can remember vividly, they said, "No, we can't replace it, it's too expensive." And I got my teeth together and we decided we would raise money, we would find money. And I still have a picture of the last, the last time I was the principal. Last couple of weeks, we hauled out that hydraulic, we put in a new one, and so now this stage can be used as it was designed to be used. And I'm proud to sit on this stage, not just as a former principal, but as a candidate for office. You know, I started my career here in Muncie at the, at Muncie Southside as a teacher, a guidance counselor, moved down the hallway eventually as associate principal. I was honored to be named a director of the Muncie Area Career Center after all that time at Southside. I had a new appreciation for students who were, who had decided that their careers were going to be in welding or in firefighting or in cosmetology because at Muncie Area Career Center, they could begin those certifications early and get right out of high school with a good career. And that really revolutionized my thinking about education. After that, I was named to intro principal right here at Central High School. It was at a time when Muncie was reducing from two high schools to one and they said, "No, it can't be done." But at the end of that year, the two schools were together. We came together and we had the winning marching band winner at the state fair and I'm proud to wear that ring again.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Aaron Clark. I'm seeking reelection for Muncie City Council. It's been an honor to serve the past four years. I've used this time to engage our neighborhoods, to support our youth programs, to support our public safety officials, and to seek out quality of life projects in our community. My goals are to continue to be accessible and connected to our neighborhoods, to our city employees. As was mentioned earlier, there's several boards and commissions that I serve on. I'm also on the store neighborhood parks board. We're looking forward to that new neighborhood coming to fruition. And it's, like I said, it's an honor to serve and I look forward to another four years working for the citizens of Muncie.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
Hi, I'm Holly Yip, that's J-U-I-P, J-U-I-P, Yip. That's usually the first thing people ask me is how do you say your name? I am running for City Council at large. And I wanna say thank you to the League of Women Voters and to Muncie Community Schools for having us here. And thank you as well for being the moderator tonight. I appreciate everybody's time being here in the audience because I think that the people that live and work in Muncie are the best thing about Muncie. And I think that the people that we have here tonight and watching and that live in our community have the skills and the mindset to make Muncie an incredible place. But what I see a lot of is people coming from outside of Muncie to tell us how we should live. And I know, I didn't grow up here, I grew up in Michigan. But I've lived in the Old West End for a really long time and I see absentee landlords, I see businesses from outside of the state coming in. And sometimes they're not even things that we need and the city is giving them exorbitant incentives to be here. I think that we need to put our money right back here in Muncie, in the housing stocks that we have, in our streets, in our schools. And we need to take care of Muncie for the people that live here in Muncie. And so, I invite you to choose Muncie just like I did and vote for Holly Yip on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maccatage.
Good evening. My name is William Maccatage. I was born and raised here in Muncie, been here all my life, never left. The things that I've been doing as far as being involved in the community, as a moderator stated earlier, I just always wanted to serve. That's just who I am, I'm a servant. I've been like that all my life, I've served my church, I've served my community. There's things that are going on in this city, in the city government, that have brought my attention to where I just said this time, I have to sit back long enough to try to weigh on whoever and to get it done. But I wanted to get involved myself. And so, trying to use the elegant words or what have you when it comes to that, I think that the way I was brought up, actions speak louder than words. So, I'm only one voice on the council, one voice, one vote. But my passion is contagious. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Selby.
Hi, I'm Rose Selby. I'm your current councilwoman on the Muncie City Council. Thank you for everybody who put this event together and allowed us the opportunity to let people in the community know what we, who we are and what, to some of us, what we're planning to do or what we have accomplished. I came to the U.S. with a dream and I was, I didn't know what I was gonna get into. But when I came here, I attended Ball State and I decided to be a teacher. And I've been with Muncie Community Schools through thick and thin for 25 years on the South Side of Muncie. Throughout my life, over this, the 25 years, I start learning and noticing the need in the community. First of all, I wanna take a moment to thank everyone in this community who helped me 30 years ago to be the person that I am today. There were a lot of human connections, there's a lot of advice, there are a lot of families that worked, stood up, stood there for me as a parent, being here by myself. So, I know how important that is. I tried to do that in my daily life when I worked with neighborhood associations on several boards that I'm involved in and with my teaching. I worked on many campaigns to make sure that great candidates are where they need to be. And I realized that I think I could do, or I can send my message myself and be more accountable for my decisions myself than just, you know, just allow or help other people. I serve on the governmental affairs finance committee and on the tax abatement committee and other, I'm very involved in my past neighborhood association.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
My name is Steve Smith. I am running for City Council at large. I thank the women and all those that put this on. I am grateful to be back in Muncie Central where I graduated from. I am born and raised here all my life. I've invested in the community, I'm growing my children in the community. I decided to stay in the great community that we have. I see a lot of things, but I realized after all the years of having all these forums in my church and in our ministry that we had a lot of promises and I'm still waiting to have them since I was a kid. And what I learned is they shared with me, "Sit on the side and watch, we'll get it done." And after years of investing my own money, my own time, my own energy, I realized that the only way things are gonna get done is if you're a part. So, that's why I invest my time, my money, my energy into making the community better from the deep roots that a lot of people can't go to. I came out the pulpit to deal with some individuals in the community that a lot of people can't reach, the hard areas. I was the principal of a school that, school that the students couldn't go, so they didn't have nowhere to go. They came to my school and we graduated. So, I've been on the forefront, I'm dealing with a lot of issues that we're dealing with. But I understand from the outside, your voice is not heard, you have to be at the table. So, that's why I'm running, to encourage other ones to run that have been silenced during many years because you couldn't get through the roadblocks or whatever. So, just being on the stage is a testament that you can get up here and do it if I can do it. So, that's the reason I'm running, to make a difference. And also, I'm dealing with a lot of the things that a lot of times we can't deal with because they're not the normal things that we've heard over the years. And we're gonna, if we're gonna go forward, we can't go back. We gotta keep going forward. And that's a tough subject that we all gonna have to have. And I just wanna be at the table where we have that discussion for my future and my children's future.
Thank you, Ms. Dunnick.
Hi, my name is Amanda Dunnick and I am your current City Court Judge. I'm running for my third elected term. I'd like to thank everybody for being here. As I look out onto the audience, it's a lot of people and I, that makes me happy that the city of Muncie is engaging in this election cycle because local government and local elections are the ones that are gonna hit you the most and they're the ones that you're going to be affected by the most. Like I said, I'm unopposed, but the reason I'm here is because as a judge, I typically do not get to interact with the public on any level. I'm removed, so any opportunity, as an elected official, that I get to interact with the public, I like to take advantage of. I want the public to be able to have a chance to ask questions of me. So, that's why I'm here tonight. I may not be able to answer the questions that are asked because of my ethical restrictions and things of that nature, but I wanna give the public an opportunity to ask them of me and for me to respond and everybody to hear it. So, again, thank you for hosting and thank you for showing up and engaging.
Hello, I'm Melinda Munson. I'm the current city clerk and I'm running for reelection. I would love your vote. I want to thank the League of Women Voters in Muncie Central for letting us do this. When I ran the last time, the clerks weren't actually part of the debate, so I'm actually kinda excited to be here. I also wanna point out, we have a lot of people running, a lot of qualified people running. As things get closer to the election date, sometimes people can get nasty. And I wanna point out to everybody on the stage and out in the audience that there's no reason for that kind of behavior. You don't know who you're gonna end up working with and sitting next to. So, I appreciate my opponent running a clean campaign, it's been very pleasant. The other thing I wanna say, I'm a record keeper and a bookkeeper. That's basically what my job is. I don't make decisions on budgets, I don't make decisions on anything. I don't get to vote on anything. So, I really like my job because it's really easy to keep it straight. You just have, have to make sure that you retain all the records for City Council. And now we're doing the border boards minutes as well. That's something that we just started doing a couple of months ago. And I have done a lot of things in the office, I've modernized it and improved it. We have now, the company that codifies our municipal code is, had an online option to put all of our records online. So, when I came into office, that was one of the first things I did my first year, was sign a contract so that we could get minutes, ordinances, resolutions. All the documents are online, we upload. And it makes it so much easier because you had to physically come into the office and request copies of anything. And I had a QR code created so that when you go to the City Council meetings, you can see the actual documents, the whole packet for the, for the resolutions or the ordinances, not just the title on the agenda. There's so many things that I could talk about, but I have a limited amount of time. Another thing, when I, within the first two months of coming into office, we didn't have...
Hi, I'm Norma Norman. I'm running for city clerk because I have the experience and the skill to be your next clerk. While I was, I was chief deputy clerk for over 10 years. While I was in the office, I implemented card payments. I also issued warrants, transferred all cases, and handled expensions. In 2017, we went electronic. That meant that we had to, I'm sorry. That meant that we had to learn the new system at the same time as keeping up with the daily incoming cases. City Court handles 3,500 to 4,000 cases a year and state statute says that we have to maintain the closed case, or, we have closed cases for 10 years and dismissed cases for over two years. We stored those cases off-site. Unfortunately, we were unable to get all cases scanned from the off-site location while I was still in office. In 2019, UNICO contacted us to bring our city ordinances up to date. That came at a high cost and the clerk was not available. I did not have the authority to approve such an expenditure, so I left it with the council secretary to present to the current, the incoming clerk. I'm glad that she did approve updating the cases online, the, I'm sorry, the ordinances online. And I'm glad that she was able to get the off-site cases scanned. Thank you.
Thank you. And you can see, it is difficult among professors who can talk all the time as much as they like, almost to place the world's best, it was on two minutes and one minutes, it is a difficult time. Real quick, a point of clarification, I thought it would be good just for the audience and again, it's kinda, it's nice we have like the three parts of government on this. So, the folks here to my right are running for at-large council, so the entire city will vote on them. There are people who will be running in the different districts throughout Muncie. And that will be, I think at their individual neighborhood, we'll be having those. So, these people are running for City Council. We have a judge here who will be the city judge, in current city judge, and then two people who are technically kind of part of the executive part and they do administrative role for the city. So, again, thinking about questions and it looks like it's gonna be a little bit heavy on the, on the council side. But anyway, so, starting off with the council, and we'll start with you, Mr. Basham, we'll move forward, and Mr. Barber, you're gonna be there to yell at me in case I forget to come back to you. But anyway, so, one of the first questions is, what can be done to eliminate blighted and abandoned homes in some of the older neighborhoods? Mr. Basham.
Thank you for that question. For, for many, many years, I was a part of the old Washington Street area and we, as a neighborhood association, began to, one house at a time, address blight. And, and that was quite an exciting time to be a part of the old Washington Street area because at the time, there were many, many homes in that area that were not as beautiful and lovely as they are now and were on exhibit this last weekend. I believe that our mayor is currently addressing and our administration is addressing appropriately the need for, for the removal of homes that are not habitable. As a citizen, I've been knocking doors and you see a lot of blighted homes in neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Basham. Mr. Clark.
I serve on the Unsafe Building and Housing Authority, so I see a lot of properties that come through. We have to follow the Indiana Code with the ways that we deal with these properties. We try to help people that come through. We try to be compassionate about where they are financially, where they are with their properties. But I think the biggest part and what we see on the board is dealing with owners that come from outside of our city. But I think the biggest part and what we see on the board is dealing with owners that come from outside of our city. So they buy up a block of houses and pick out two or three that they really like, and then the, then the remainers go back on the books. So we, we need to find ways that we can strengthen our existing code for blight. We need to support our land bank to accept some of those properties that we can get back from those bad owners and, and do the types of things that help support the neighborhoods and get some new houses up the backend where some of those empty lots are, or revitalize some of those houses that are able to be revitalized.
Thank you, Ms. Yeh.
Yes, as someone that sat on the Historic Preservation and Rehabilitation Commission for seven years, as well as a resident of the Old West End, I'm pretty familiar with blight in our city and how we seem to address it. When I was on the Preservation Commission, we started a survey called Scout Muncie because it hadn't been done since the eighties. And we wanted to see what is the actual state and character of homes within our community. When we think about historic, a lot of times our minds go to the Victorian era, but really a historic home is anything that's over 50 years old. Things like the East Central Neighborhood that has the locally landmarked Emily Kimbrough District is a good example of how more than just demolition, but actual rehabilitation can help bring up the tax base and the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh.
Yes, last weekend, I was a volunteer in our neighborhood, Whitey Neighborhood cleanup and got to ride around the back of the garbage truck. And man, did I see a lot of those, those, those houses that are bad. Matter of fact, I lived right next door to one for the last five years. Always asked the questions of how to get this done. And so that's one of the reasons I say it's time, because I just want to get involved. Now finding out that we need to update the enforcement codes or what have you, that's a great idea and that's a start. But it is a bad situation in Muncie right now. And dealing with the out-of-state owners, we need to, you know, maybe make it tougher then or make them more accountable. You know, those are the things that I'm looking at. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Suss.
Okay, one of the, the second ordinance that I passed on the Muncie City Council was the first abandoned home registry in Muncie. When I got on council, I noticed that people were calling and complaining about blight houses. When I looked at the ordinance, there was nothing. So we were not, we didn't have a registry. We had no expectation. We just let people do whatever they did. So there is something in the book. I worked with another council person who's on the other side, other side of the aisle, as people speak, Mr. Brandon here. And together, we met with the mayor, we met with our council, city council attorney, with the Realtors Association, and we have something in the books. As of this week, there are 750 houses that were on the registry. Only 207 are not compliant.
Thank you. Good, Mr. Smith?
What we can do with blight is give our citizens hope again. We don't have a clear definition what blight is, but we have a clear definition that we want to tear it down. We have to give hope back to our people. I, I actually walked through with a senior that was getting ready to be put out there, home demolished home. And the church came together and helped them get their facility back and remodel it way better than what they thought they would. They were faced with, where am I gonna live with? How am I gonna survive? Although it might be blight to you, but to them, that might be their only dream. And I understand you want a beautiful facility. You want things nice near you, but that might be their only hope. So my suggestion with dealing with the blight is instead of spending $7,000, $10,000 to tear it down, maybe you should invest that money back into the homes that are blighted. Instead of having empty lots, have beautifications of the neighborhoods with that money that has been spent.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Okay, blight houses. Can you hear me? Okay. We need to get them back in the hands of somebody that really wants to remodel them or raise them and maybe build something newer in the, in that area. Make sure that the owners are held responsible for them. Work out a rigorous agenda to, to make sure that the owners, the out-of-state owners are responsible. Also, we have to mow them. Mowing these blight lots, help keep the critters and stuff from living in the, in the areas. I've got three blight houses in front of my house and I get opossums and raccoons and groundhogs and all that stuff. So if we can keep them mowed, tax the, send the bill to the owners, make them pay it. If not, work them through the, the system and get them out of the, out of those owners' hands and get them in somebody that really wants to take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, starting with Mr. Clerk, we've got a next question. Again, a lot of these, I apologize, are for the council. So there'll be a couple. I'm gonna try to rotate you a little bit better. Anyway, what can we, what can council do to bring businesses to Muncie that will stay and provide good jobs? So Mr. Clerk, we'll start with you. We'll come this way and go back to the beginning.
I think as a councilperson, we can also operate as an economic development official. I'm for our city. I graduated from the week-long Indiana Basic Economic Development Course about two years ago. It's very insightful and it just teaches you ways as an elected official to reach out to our existing businesses, to make sure that we're supporting them and nurturing them and providing the resources that they need. There are a lot of great businesses here in town that are looking to expand. So we need to be able to support those opportunities for expansion for those businesses. One out-of-town business in particular is the Gilman's Home Store that we recruited on Muncie's south side. It started with a conversation I had with our county commissioners. They were interested in bringing a home deep for lowers. Couldn't be done. So I began researching some of the smaller opportunities that we'd have. I made a phone call to Mr. Gilman himself and told him to connect with our mayor, deputy mayor. And within about three weeks, a deal was done to bring them into our town.
Thank you, Ms. Yeh.
Yes, I think there's a lot that we can do to incentivize our economy on city council. And I think a lot of that starts by investing in Muncie. The reason that people move to a city is for two things. They want to feel safe and they want to have good schools. They want to come to communities that have a high quality of life. And so if we can improve the quality of life for people that are living here in Muncie, then we can also raise our tax base and have city council have more ways that they can invest into the rest of the community. And when we invest dollars into local businesses, especially minority-owned or women-led businesses, those tax dollars come back at an even higher rate because people that live and work local shop and spend local and they keep the money at home.
Mr. McIntosh?
I have to agree with you. We do need to, to keep the dollars and, and support our entrepreneurship right here in our own city. We need to help the, the businesses right here. We need to make it attractive so that they will come in and, and create jobs. And I'm talking about jobs that are livable wage jobs, you know, not just, you know, the, we're here for the low-income jobs. Where people gotta go out and make two or three jobs just to make ends meet. But getting on the council and then we all come together and come up with a plan that will help turn this city around, we got to create jobs. We gotta create jobs somehow. We just gotta get somewhere to have jobs where people can spend the dollars. Like you were saying, I have to agree with you. I'm sorry, but I have to agree with you. So that's the way I feel about it also.
Thank you, Ms. Suss.
Okay, I totally believe in small businesses. In Muncie, I think, to me, that's the way to go, encouraging small businesses. I just want to talk to let you know about what I have been doing. And from this, hopefully that'll give you an idea of how far I will go. I am currently, I was a founding member of the Riverfront District that blurs businesses to Muncie. And we have issued six of those licenses for those businesses to expand or start new. I am on the Tax Abatement Committee where I, where I, with Mr. Aaron Clark. He's the president of the Tax Abatement Committee, where we work with businesses either to support them by, when they expand, by giving them some tax incentives. I am also part of the Black Chamber. I connect business entrepreneurs with, with other entities in the, in the community. And two of the businesses that I did help was Danielle's Legacy, Danielle's.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
How to attract business to Muncie, Indiana simply starts with the people. When I grew up, we had three high schools. They had a great population to pick from because we had a lot of high schools coming out of school so they could fill those jobs. Working for Muncie Power, working for Progress Rail. The problem is we couldn't fill the positions that we already had. So therefore, in order to draw people to this area, we have to have people to fill the jobs. So therefore, I would suggest that we build in our peoples, do mom and pop shops. And then the people are your biggest mouthpiece. They're gonna tell people, man, they're invested into businesses. Hey, you need to come here. They're giving you incentives to start businesses. It starts with your people. You're not gonna attract any business here without people to put in the jobs. It's just not gonna happen. And how do I know that? Because my job was to get companies to come here when we were trying to expand and get people to fill those positions. And it just wasn't happening.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
First of all, you need to start with the roads. That's the first thing industry owners come in and see is our roads. If we can't maintain our roads, what else can we not maintain? Very passionate about the roads. Carmel Fisher, Kokomo, Westfield, all these places are getting these new industries. You've got electric batteries for cars. They're building a big plant for that in Kokomo. They're building a big, they're building three solar panel plants over in Ohio. We can get some of that here if we can get our roads better and, and contact these industries and get them back in there. We got a brownfield out here that'd be great to, to build a solar farm or battery plant on or whatever it takes to get them here. And worry about, take care of our people that's here now. Instead of giving all the people that's here now are sending to the local businesses, give them to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Basham.
When businesses look for a place to relocate, they look to see if they have a ready workforce. One of the things I learned a while at the Muncie Area Career Center was that we are in the business of looking at business trends and needs and we adjust our program, programming accordingly. The Muncie Area Career Center has recently moved from the Elgin Campus to the Cowan Road Campus near Ivy Tech Community College and has formed incredible partnerships for not only secondary certification in welding and cosmetology and fire safety and building, but also because we have relocated near Muncie Area, or Muncie, the Ivy Tech Community College. We're uniquely able to partner to provide a ready workforce as we did with Game Pack.
Thank you. So moving on to the next question, we'll just start with Ms. Yeh, and I have good news. We have, it actually involves the judge question too. So we will, once we're finished with the council candidates, we will move on to you. And then I've got a question for, for the clerk treasurers as well and then we'll do that next. So one of the biggest problems facing Muncie is addiction, substance use disorder. What would you do in your role to respond to that problem? Ms. Yeh, we'll start with you and then we'll come down and go back to the other end.
You said that really fast. Can you say that one more time?
One of the biggest problems facing Muncie is addiction, substance abuse disorder. What would you do in your role to respond to that problem?
Well, that is probably one of the most pressing questions that Muncie has right now is what to do about addiction and substance abuse as well as our mental health crisis. We've been making forward strides. It is getting better in some ways, but we've got to do more and we have to do more as a complete city. There are a lot of great nonprofits that are working together to do things like start the addiction center as well as to make sure that people have places to sleep and housing. But it's just not enough. And I think there's things that we could do to look at alternative methods for, like the drug court or, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh.
Yes, it is a, it's a heavy, heavy problem right now in our community. The thing that concerned me a lot is that I don't think the information is getting out to some of them to where they can go for help. We need to address it and then find out if people have issues and problems for why they were going and getting on drugs. And it's, it's a hard thing right now. It really is. But we need to make it available, the information on where they can go and get the help. I just, I don't know. It's just one of those things that makes you why. It's, it's a, it's a bad thing right now. But I do think people will be able to come and get help if they know where to go. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, Ms. Sally.
Okay. I think the city of Muncie is going in the right direction when it's coming to drug addiction. I think we know it's a problem. The mayor's office and the city council allocated almost $2 million to go to treatment and drug addiction resources. So I think that's great. Mr. Clark and myself were part of those, the votes and discussions. I am very a fan of ACDC, Addiction Coalition of Delaware County, and I am a supporter of them. I attended some of their meetings and have discussions with them. I look up to them as a good source of information to help us solve this problem. I appreciate the county having the drug rehab center at the jail. And we need to look at harm reduction too. We need the people to live long enough so we can treat them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I believe the judge was speaking on it the other day that they were working towards that way as far as bringing programs to better that. I believe the city has already started allocating resources to that. But the problem's gonna still be in the streets. How do you get to the ones that, that's how they survive? They're selling the drugs and the kids are getting addicted a lot earlier to the pills that parents might be getting prescribed from the doctors. So it's a bigger problem than just smoking weed or the crack or the heroin or the boy or the girl that's wandering the streets. It's a bigger problem. And of course, now that there's money involved, it's gonna be a lot of attention drawn to it. But it's a deeper problem that goes back to having jobs, having things for them to do that's gonna get them at an early age so they don't go down that road. And then once we, as a group, come up with a plan, we just gotta stick with the plan to be able to help them.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Addiction substance abuse, it's a bad, bad disease. A lot of people don't want to get addicted to drugs, but it happens. When it happens, it happens right now. We need to get a project going that's gonna take, happen a lot faster than the one we're working on now. There's a, we was promised going by October. They've just barely started on the addiction center, substance abuse addiction center at Athem Walnut. There hasn't been a whole lot done by it. I live three blocks away from it. I drive by it every day, two or three times a day. There's not much going on. I think the city needs to get involved with the county to pull the funds together and work as a community of Delaware County to get a place efficient enough to take care of this problem. And I will work with both parties, Democrat and Republicans, to make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Basham.
As a councilman, I will continue to do the work that I've been doing with nonprofits and Muncie Community Schools and other entities relating to drug addiction and, and treatment. For many years, I've been involved with the Muncie Mission who does a wonderful job of treating their population for addiction and recovery. They're expanding, in fact, we'll have a ribbon cutting shortly, expanding their, their centers throughout the south side of Muncie. Also, I'm thankful that the current administration has seen this need on the south side of town and very shortly will be opening that treatment center. Muncie Community Schools is also filled with counselors and health professionals throughout the schools who are helping treat students with addiction and their families. I would be out there advocating for those programs. I would be out there advocating for those programs.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
So as a counselor, I will continue to partner with our neighborhoods. There's no one that knows more with what's going on in our city than our neighborhood leaders that live with some of those folks who may have those mental health or substance abuse issues. We also have to partner with our medical providers and the mental health providers. They're the ones that are going to be bringing the actual service to fruition. We have to actively pursue the funding, whether it be locally through our foundations or petitioning our, our representatives in DC. I just signed a resolution on Monday, accepting a grant for MPD to offer a professional mental health, a mental health professional to serve with MPD on the front lines to help de-escalate situations and then kind of be a first responder when some of those issues arise.
Thank you, Judge Donick.
You know, when I think about substance abuse and addiction, that's what I deal with every day in the court. I would say 75% of everybody who comes through my court is suffering from either substance abuse or mental health issues. Both, one or the other, it's, it doesn't matter. The one thing that I have found throughout my legal career as a government is not a business. Government's a service provider. And until we can get our local, state and federal governments to provide to the local level the services that we need, we're going to be missing people who fall through the cracks and they land in my court and they land in the felony courts and they land with the ones who are committing crimes against the community. So what I have done in my time at city court to address this issue is when I came in, there were almost 9,000 cases pending, 9,000 misdemeanors pending. We now have just under 4,000, I think. And we've taken the time of getting cases resolved from two years down to hopefully nine months to a year, which means the people who need services are getting them sooner. I've partnered with or worked with Delaware County Community Corrections to streamline the services with the probation department.
That's a good news, bad news situation. I'm going to give you a break. You all will get a break from round and fire. I'm going to turn it over to the clerk treasures after we have a question for both of you. So and we can start, I guess, with you, Ms. Muncie. What is the top priority for you for the next four years that you would like to improve in your office?
Well, I actually did this one, like, this was on my list, but I got it out of the leg two weeks ago. We have a computer kiosk now in the lobby. So a lot of times when someone wants to come in and pay a parking ticket or a speeding ticket, they don't know they can do it online. They would come to the window, they would give us a credit card and just for security purposes for my staff as well as the client. It's just easier for them to put their own information in. So it's actually worked out really well. We've collected a lot more money in the last two weeks. But I also want to, something that I'd like to, I need to talk to the mayor, whoever, whomever wins the mayor election. And I probably need to run it through council for a minute. We record keep and book keep. That's what my office does. So for record retention, we are doing the city council and now board of works. I wouldn't mind taking on some of the other important boards because I upload to Gate Lake Software minutes for redevelopment council. Part work.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I want to improve customer service, not eliminate it. I believe that all employees need to be cross-trained and efficient at all duties in the office. I want all customers to come into the clerk's office to be greeted with a smile and with respect. The clerk doesn't need to be involved in other city government, especially if it's going to require another employee. The city clerk's office is the clerk for the court, not for the entire city. Also, I don't think the clerk should be talking about court cases. Those are confidential. I don't have anything else to bring until I get into the office and see what has been changed and what still needs to be changed. But I promise you, I will always look for improvement.
Thank you. Break's over, so now we have to move back to the other end. One other quick question. We'll start with Mr. McIntosh, and then I'll grab some more questions for you as we have time remaining. What is your position on building solar projects, on brownfields? And really, you know, maybe what are, what are your ideas for addressing the brownfields in Muncie over the office? Mr. McIntosh, we'll start with you.
Position on the solar. I'm all for whatever's going to really help when it comes to energy. I know it can be an issue on properties that people feel like they want to keep it in farming or what have you. But we got to look at the big picture. And then it's all about energy. We have to move forward. And that's kind of the way I feel about that though. That's the way I feel about it, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Helly.
Solar energy, I think that is where we need to be going in the future to help with our environment. These are things that we need to start considering for our future grandchildren and the people who are going to inhabit the earth after we're gone. I was a proponent of the solar energy project at the Thomas Park, Avondale area. I even went to the meetings and I spoke in support of it. It would have been a great thing for the city, but it not, it did not pass through council. When it comes to, we have several brownfields in Muncie. What I would suggest and what I would like to work on is trying to have some money there available so we can hire, write, businesses that can write those intensive grants to get money to clean our, our brownfields. There's businesses that specialize in that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Specifically dealing with the solar panels and the solar fields. I'm all for it as long as it's going into the general fund and not specific organizations that's going to not benefit our citizens. If it's going to go and it's going to benefit us as a group, our community, I'm all for it. But if it's going to go to these people over here and they're going to decide what they're going to do with it and they go over there and they get these backdoor deals, I'm absolutely against it. But if it's going to go to actually benefiting our citizens, helping with the taxes, helping build our community, I am 100% behind it.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
I had my mic turned off just a minute ago, but I will be abrasive for the substance abuse and the addiction program. The solar, right now Homeland Security is getting these panels in on these big ships over here in New York and everywhere that they come in. They're destroying these panels because these panels are made by China, which have child labor issues. So they're destroying them. So that's the reason the solar farm in, well, San Bill's not being built right now because they can't get panels. So they've got three new places in Ohio building new factories for these panels. We've got a big spot out here on West 32 that would be great to get some of these solar panel farmers here to get this stuff made here in the United States. And, and like I said, there's, there's a big market for it. And I don't have a problem with using the brownfields and stuff for the solar panel factories and whatever it needs, whatever it takes to get an industry engine. Muncie and Delaware County.
Thank you, Mr. Basham.
That solar field on the brownfield was a great opportunity for Muncie to pass renewable energy. We did not. As a counselor, I will vote for the use of solar energy and wind energy. We have to find clean, alternative energy for the future. And not play politics with the success that was on the verge of happening with that solar energy field. I, I will continue to advocate for renewable energy.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
I was a proponent of the Chevy solar plant. It was voted down in a five to four vote, the four Republicans supporting that. I've talked to so many people that say, well, this is a bizarre world. Republicans are supporting renewable resources. But it is something that is important for our environment, it's important for our future. Brownfields are an excellent opportunity for solar. There is very unique terms in the way that you remediate properties. Brownfields in general can be long or they can be short. So what I want to do is I want to bring back the Chevy plant project. I'll bring back other locations. It's an annuity. It's a way to bring revenue into our city. As revenue goes up, I spoke to this last night, our, our tax, tax costs can go down. Our property tax costs can go down. So right now, the federal government is offering tax incentives for solar projects to municipalities. There's rules involved and it could pay for up to 50% of the project. So we're going to try to utilize those tax incentives and bring some solar back.
Thank you, Ms. Yate.
Yes, in general, I am a big fan of solar energy as well as wind energy and other renewable resources. But at the same time, I want to make sure that the placement of those solar fields makes sense and that it will be an economic benefit to the city in the long run. As far as our brownfields go, I think they're all unique. They're unique because they may have been contaminated in different ways. And so how we use them is going to have to depend, depend on the best ways to mitigate any damage that might still be within the soil. We don't want to cause a brownfield problem to be a bigger problem. But I think we are making strides as we move forward. The Kinselman Energy Park is one of those places where we're seeing a brownfield become a greenfield.
Thank you for shifting gears again to Judge Donick. There's a question for you. Does Muncie have eviction public defender to help answer legal questions regarding tenant rights for those who cannot afford counsel?
Muncie does not. That, it's not a public defender. You're entitled to a counsel on criminal cases and not on civil cases. But there are legal agencies around. I don't know what it's called now that offer pro bono services. Usually that's partnered with the State Bar Association. And I don't believe there is one in Muncie. I do know there's a self-help center at the Justice Center, not at City Hall, which is typically banned by an attorney. I don't know if they give advice there or if they just help with the pro se filing of documents now. So no, you're not entitled to a public defender. There's no funding for legal services in the budget for civil cases.
Thank you. And then we have a question for the city, the city clerk treasures. And we'll, and we'll start with Ms., Ms. Norman. What would you do differently in the office to make it more accessible to the public? We'll start with you.
I don't know really what we could do to make it more accessible until I get in there and see what's been changed and what hasn't. You can bank your payments online or in our office with cash, money order per car.
Thank you, Ms. Basham.
Well, it kind of goes along with like record retention. You know, we, we've got everything up online now. Be interested in working with some other boards to see if we can't do some records. It's the city clerk's job to retain records. There, honestly, there's been so many things I've updated in the office. I, I'm not sure what else I can do. We've scanned every single document that, every paper file, even we had two rooms out on Grandal that had court cases we leased. There was a stack of file boxes, three feet high, four feet wide and nine feet long when I came in. And we see in every single document, we, we've made everything accessible. The minutes and ordinances and resolutions are scanned back to 1980. I'm always looking for things for my staff. I don't want them to be idle. I want them to be busy. So if there's downtime, we're doing something.
Good, thank you. Moving back to council candidates. And again, I think we start with Ms. Helly. I think we've got that okay. Keeping that track, keeping track of that, okay. Again, kind of on a similar question, moving forward, what, what would you like to see done with the Muncie Mall and its current state?
Okay, I would like for it to be, we are talking, there's a lot of talk about things for youth to do, recreational stuff for kids who are between 12 and 19 years old. There are so many opportunities to use that, to concentrate on youth activities or events. So I would say we have that there. We need to create, make it a center for youth empowerment, youth businesses. So I think there's a space there. And if we just keep that population in mind, I think, I think it would be great for our city, so.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I believe we have to create our identity for Muncie. Whatever Muncie is, that's what that facility should be to draw people here. If it needs to be an event center, if it needs to be a welcome center, if it needs to be a youth facility, it could be a lot of things. As I talked to the owners of the facility at the time, when they were looking about eight years ago, they were willing to do anything and invest the money into it to make it happen. We just got to come up with the idea that could draw people. And that's going to be the citizens of this community and the identity of this community, what we want to be. We can make it a theme park, we can make it a whole lot of things, but it starts with us. What is our entity for Muncie, Indiana? Because we can track a lot of stuff here. Put a casino there, we can do a whole lot. But what do we want to be known as is what that mall should become.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
The Muncie Mall, it was a great place at one time. It could still be a great place. But as a council member, I would work with economic development because that is still privately owned to try to get more businesses to come back into town, give some incentives. And like I said, work with economic, with economic development to, to make it appealing to vendors and stuff to, to utilize the mall. Like I said, it's, it's still privately owned at this time, so the council can't do a whole lot with it. But if, if things are brought to the council to, to work together to bring the businesses back to the mall, that'd be great. So that's working with economic development.
You know, eighty malls have become a problem for many cities around the country. And Muncie is just grappling with this issue. But others have used that vast space with huge parking lots to their advantage, incorporating retail, neighborhood groceries, activities such as roller and ice skating rinks, even go-karts and mini golf courses. So I think there are so many opportunities for us ahead. And I look forward to working with my other counselors and the mayor as we develop a new plan for the Muncie Mall.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
As a kid of the eighties and nineties like I, I have a lot of good memories of the mall. And the bleeding heart of me says, I wish if we could go back to how it used to be. I think that we have to realize that the retail shopping trends have changed. And Amazon was a big part of changing the way that you and I shop and the way that we, the way that we do things online. So remembering one that it's a privately held property, it's important to get a buyer or an owner there that cares about our community and has a real plan for that property or that site. So as a council, we just want to be able to try to support what new business might come in, whether it be retail or whether it may be another, another type of business that comes in. There's a lot on the roof and just like, and like Dale said, there's a lot of properties surrounding there. There's a lot of acreage that you can be really creative with and do a lot of things with. So supporting our economic development teams and what ideas that they, they come up with.
Thank you, Ms. Yate.
Yes, I think the Muncie Mall is a place for nostalgia for many of us here. It's a place that I worked for many, many years. And I think we can all agree that the mall is not going to come back as the mall of many of our youth or our imagination. So while it is a great opportunity for us to look at ways that we can reimagine that space, it is still a privately held company. I'd probably rather think about ways that we can reimagine and reuse the space of the downtown YMCA, especially now that the city owns it. I know there's some services that are missing or there's gaps in the community, such as more places for addiction and recovery, as well as even a warming shelter. I don't know that we have a warming shelter this year. We also don't have cooling shelters in the summer. And that's a huge strain on some of our most vulnerable populations.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh.
Yes, like I said before, I, I was born and raised here all my life, been here all my life. The mall was just awesome. We can't go back, that's obvious, due to the internet and Amazon and things like that. I've always had a vision that I wanted to see someone put a skating rink in there. I've always had a vision that I wanted to see someone put a skating rink in there. It's just, it's wide open for that. Something that the youth need to have or do so they would, you know, keep them off the streets, give them something to do. And also, there's so much space there that you can have your warming houses, or not houses, but warming spaces and cool spaces. But I think that we need to really, to Mr. Steve's point, what does Muncie really want to be? What do we want to be known for? And I think we need to start looking at our own community and looking at our youth. I'm so worried about our youth right now. That's another reason why I say it's time.
Thank you. So we have time for one more question for the council candidates, and then after that, we'll go and I'll start on this side after we finish with them, and everybody will get a one-minute closing, you know, to get us close to time. So the last minute, and thank you for answering this question, I've been holding this all night, just because I think it's a great question to end with. As a city council candidate, what would you want to accomplish for Muncie for the betterment of all in your first term? So everybody will have a chance to go first, and Mr. Smith, you get to finish this off as well first.
Ooh, so many things went through my mind. What I would like to accomplish is our voice actually being heard and change actually coming, and not being pushed down to the next generation to fix the problems that we've been dealing with for the last 40 years. Dealing with the food deserts that we're dealing with, with a whole half of the community, probably the biggest districts in the food desert. Dealing with the youth problems that was kicked down the road for 20-plus years, we're going to be the ones that have to pay the bills that we're fixing right now. I believe my goal is to be the voice for those that have not been heard and have been pacified for the last 50-plus years. And we have to start now, or it won't happen. It'll just keep pushing down and pushing down, and your voice hasn't been heard. And I think the time to make that happen is this time around. I believe I'm the person that can make that happen for you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Following the rules, having the mayor take the business to the council that's supposed to be taken to the council. Making sure that these companies that are coming in doing these works, this work, if there's conflict of interest that people know about it. Not having your family coming in and bidding the work without people knowing who we're getting in debt with. Very simple, straight up, forward, honesty, and make sure it's done by the letter of the law. That's why we have our ordinances and stuff for the council to be the checks and balances of where our money is going to. And when I say our money, it's our money, us taxpayers' money. So that's what I want to accomplish the first few months in office. Not the first four years, the first few months. And that's what I will accomplish. I'll make sure that it's done by the letter of the law.
Thank you. Mr. Basham.
One of my mentors the other night reminded me that one of the most important roles of the city council is to pass a balanced budget. It is from a budget that you're priorities spring, and as a counselor, I'll certainly look forward to working with other counselors to set the new priorities for our city and to balance the budget. But I also think after that, I want to develop opportunities with our partners, Ivy Tech Community College, Ball State University, Muncie Community Schools. We have a wealth of resources in this city, and I believe that we need to develop those partnerships to benefit all of Muncie.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
I believe that community development is economic development, so being behind projects that are quality of life driven, making our neighborhoods ADA accessible, making them walkable and bikeable, and then also investing in our parks. Our parks are places where people can get away, enjoy that green space and relax, and I believe that investing in some amenities and improvements to those parks can go a long way. That's what attracts businesses. Businesses hire people, people choose to live in our area. So me, as a father of five, my dream is to keep all five of my kiddos nearby. So I want businesses to come here, I want businesses to stay here, and I want my children to be entrepreneurs, create those businesses, or be a part of the business community here in Muncie.
Thank you, Ms. Yehi.
Yes. Let's see. I think immediately, I'm going to answer my email, because as a citizen, when we reach out to people in public office, one of the minimum requirements is to be able to answer. And if I can't answer the question or if it's outside of city council's realm of influence, then I want to introduce people to the person that they do need to talk to. Doesn't help somebody say, I'm sorry, I can't help you with your pending eviction, if I don't also send you where you can go to get help with an eviction or in any other type of situation. I think that's part of being and maintaining a professional government, is behaving in a professional manner, and that includes being at the table when decisions are being made. The budget is kind of our minimum. We've got to do more than that, and that's figure out ways to fairly inevitably grow our community.
Thank you. Mr. McIntosh.
Yes, I would like to, I would like to draw the gap closer, I would, the divide that we have in our city government. I want the community to be able to trust our city government again. That's another reason I wanted to get involved and get started in that. To be able to come to me and give you the information that you're asking for and point you in the right direction. If I can't do it, then show you to someone who can. But then the divide of, I don't care about Democratic, Republican, I am a true Democrat, don't get me wrong, but we need to come together so we can get things done. It's about the community. That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Selby.
Yes, I mentioned blight and the ordinance that I sponsored for eliminating or help of try to eliminate blight in Muncie. I would like to expand the ordinance. We're going to collect data, and we are collecting data on, I mentioned that number 750 registered baby home owners registered their property. 207, out of that, 207 are still noncompliant, so that's a good beginning. We need to look at what else we need to add to that ordinance. I'm a big supporter of the Muncie laymen and fought alongside them to try to get state funding from state legislators, and we failed. That's okay. We're going to try, my mission is to try to find money and work with the county to come up with some support to help them and resources for our public safety. Muncie Community Schools allows teachers that work for them 50% a decrease in if you want to continue education. They need to offer that also for our public safety. I will work with Ball State to make sure they get the same advantage.
So this will bring us to our closing statements, and I'm going to, as I started over here on the right, I'm going to start on the left, I'm going to let Ms. Norman go ahead and start, and we'll move from left to right this time for closing statements. And again, you have a one minute for your closing statement. Please go ahead.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and Dr. Consella for having this event tonight. I want to reiterate that I have over 10 years' experience in that office. I am hardworking, honest, and dedicated. I would appreciate your support on November, before November 7th. Norman Norman, it's an easy name to remember, easy button to push. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
When I came into the office, I had to train myself. There was a, there's some issues, but anyway, in the three years' time, I have done everything that I said I would do when I ran the first time. I had done my own state board of accounts audit and hired someone to audit my office, and the gentleman actually endorsed me, he's retired now, so he can, he endorsed me. You can find it on my webpage, munciesofmuncie.com. I also have the Facebook page, Linda Muncie, City Clerk. There were a lot of things that needed improved, and honestly, I couldn't do it without the staff. I have a wonderful staff that rallied together. I had a vision for what I wanted to do, and they helped me accomplish it in three years. So 11 years, I did it in three, and I still have other things I want to do. I'd like to do another eight years, maybe even more, as clerk. So I hope that you think about voting for me. I have done the job, I've done it well.
Thank you. Judge Donick.
Hi, Amanda Donick, Judge, Muncie City Court. I do want to say on the eviction issue, Muncie City Court is a limited jurisdiction court if there's criminal misdemeanors, ordinance violations, and infractions. So evictions are not heard in Muncie City Court. I'm not sure if there's programs available post-COVID for eviction help, but that would be information you can find out at the Justice Center with the circuit courts where those are heard. Thank you guys for engaging in the process, for asking the questions. I hope you vote, I hope you get your neighbors to vote, because the only time that we will get the government that we need is when we do vote. And local elections are the ones that hit you the most, they're the ones that hear your cases, they're the ones that fix your roads, they're the ones that do all of those things. So I'm thankful for the organizations that put on these debates, I'm thankful for the candidates on the stage that actually get put themselves available to the public, and I thank the public for being here and listening.
Back over here, Mr. Smith.
Once again, I'm excited to be on the stage. Good part is only three of us get to go forward and be representatives of you to make your voice heard. I'm just glad that through all the processes and hoops I had to jump through to get to this point, that once again, it is doable, and I'm going to thank you for all those that encouraged me to keep going. I'm going to keep fighting, I got a long life ahead of me, so I'm going to keep on fighting to make sure that our voice is heard at the table. Hopefully, if there's any questions, I can ask those, you can reach me at alexdiesmith.com, you can reach me on social media, I'm an open book. I'm a social worker, so my goal is to speak and do as my support and help.
Okay, I would like to finish my last, may I finish, regarding our public safety. Muncie Community Schools employees get a 50% discount for our continued education. One way the BSU can help us retain and attract more public safety from police than fire and keep them in town is to offer the same incentive to them, and that would help our city and our taxes too. Financially, you will help the city. I will, I am a servant, and I am a math teacher, I'm a problem solver. There is a solution, or maybe more than one, for everything if people come together and think outside the box. I will continue working tirelessly. I do have a Facebook page, and so, and I ask people when I'm door knocking, don't listen to what I'm just saying. Please Google, please research your candidate. The information is right there in front of you, and I would request every one of you to go ahead and put my name in there, and if you like what you see, I would appreciate your vote on November 7th.
Mr. McIntosh.
Yes, as was stated earlier, that I was former president of UAW, and that means you have to be in negotiations, which I do know the council has to negotiate, the city, firemen, the police, sanitation, those kind of things. At the time, Board of Wonder was getting ready to close, we had to negotiate for a settlement, but they wanted to go after the retirees' health insurance. The committee was tied, four to four. I was the president, was the deciding vote. I voted no, because the retirees opened the doors, made it possible for me to be able to get a good paid job. It was the right thing to do. That's who I am. That's who I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yehi.
Yes. Once again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and also Dr. Consella. Okay, Consella, I got it right. Let's see. And my name again is Holly Yike with a J for City Council at Large. Some people may not know that when they vote straight ticket, they still have to punch individual at-large candidates, so I just want to remind you that you'll get to vote for three of us, and I hope you remember that Holly Yike with a J when you're doing that. But your vote is your voice. I chose Muncie first when I came to Ball State University, and I chose Muncie again as the place to raise my daughter. I chose Muncie Community Schools for her education, and I'm choosing to run for Muncie City Council so that I can make Muncie better for my daughter, so she can choose Muncie too.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
Tonight, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to serve these last four years. I consider myself the hardest working person on this council. I wake up every day trying to think of ways to improve myself as an elected official and to improve our city. I will continue to represent every neighborhood, every citizen, and then I look forward to another four years of serving you on this council.
Thank you, Mr. Basham.
Well, thank you all for coming tonight. It's an honor to be here with all of these candidates who have expressed so many great ideas. But if you want somebody who has a history, a record of success, who has helped you and your children plan their future, who has been a part of their successes, please vote for Dale Basham, City Council at Large. If you want somebody who will listen to you, who will learn from you, who will take action for you, vote for Dale Basham, City Council. Now, a lot of you are not comfortable calling me Dale, because I've been Mr. Basham to you all of these years. Well, call me, don't be afraid, you can call me, vote for Mr. Basham or Dale Basham on or before November 7th. We've done it before, we'll do it again.
Thank you. Mr. Barber.
I'm Indian Strong. My endorsements are the UAW, the AFL-CIO, Operators Union Local 103, Lionel Labor Union 1112, IBW 855. They have all endorsed me. I don't want to be a rubber stamp for the mayor. Whoever is the mayor, I don't want to be a rubber stamp. Balanced budgets, please, folks, understand that balanced budgets are required by state law. That is, you know, it is a law that they have to have a balanced budget, so don't look at the smokescreen on that. And Holly took my last statement. If you vote straight ticket, please go down and vote for the individuals. Do not vote straight ticket, because if you vote straight ticket, none of these people up here will get your vote. So be sure you remember, go down and vote for each and every individual. That way, you know you have voted for that individual that you want to be in that office. And make sure you vote for the at-large members. Once again, I'm Audi Barber, running for City Council Large. Thank you.
Again, thank you all for the closing statements. A couple of words of closing, and then we'll thank the candidates. The League of Women Voters has information available on how, where, and when to vote in the upcoming election, as well as other voting information and lobbying. They also have information about the latest Vote411 website. In the coming weeks, they will be sending the candidates some questions, and their answers to those questions will be published on the Vote411 in October. So we hope you visit the website and see what they have to say. Let's take a moment, it is not easy, it's rapid-fire, and they only have one minute to talk about, you know, some huge issues tonight, so let's give our candidates a huge round of applause. Thank you. 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 Thank you.